The planning board meeting for Wednesday, June 10th. If you please rise for the pledge allegiance, please. Okay, next we'll have swearing in for any of the citizens that would like to speak during the meeting during our open forum. Any citizens like to be sworn in?
If you're going to address the board at any time tonight, please rise and raise your hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give? The truth will help you before God.
Okay, first agenda item is the approval of the minutes for February 12th. Any questions? Any comments before we go through regarding the minutes? Okay, the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to come present and state your name and your address, please, if you want to speak to the board.
For anything not on the agenda.
There goes more audience. Citizens' forum is closed.
Okay, this is a rezoning from R2 Residential Single Family District to ROR Residential Office Retail. It's a little unusual because usually when you have a rezoning, you also have a land use change.
Point of order. Did we approve the minutes from February 12th?
No.
No, we didn't. Hold just one moment, please.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You got it, Joe.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, usually when you have a rezoning, you also have a land use change going along with it. In this case, the land use on the property is already ROR. And it's also in the county is retail services, which is ROR falls under retail services. So there's no land use change tonight. We researched it. City staff looked back as far as we could. And the property has always had a land use of ROR. So there's just been an incompatibility between the zoning and the land use for years. Subject property is located in the south side of St. Petersburg Drive, west of South Bayview Boulevard, and north of Burlington Avenue. Has a zoning designation currently of R2 Residential Single Family District with the city land use of residential office retail and county land use of retail services. As I indicated, the current zoning and land use are incompatible. And the proposed zoning will address this by making them the same also under the countywide rules. It is comprised of two lots, three and four. Lot three is vacant and lot four has a wood frame residential house that was built approximately in 1925. The house has been vacant for several years and shows signs of neglect and dilapidation. The applicant is proposing a three unit residential development on both lots of the subject property. And as I said, the, under the ROR land use, that would allow 15 units per acre. It is only .37 acres. So he is limited to how many he could put on under that guidance. And under the countywide rules, it would have been 24 acres. It's surrounded by residential single family homes in the south and west. Residential properties are directly across on South Bayview Boulevard. And to the north of the property, it's adjacent to Bayview Motel, which is zoned ROR and also has a residential office retail future land use designation. The rezoning needs to be evaluated under Article 3, Section 3.15.3 Standards for Approval of the Land Development Code. Available uses to which the property may be put are appropriate to the property in question and compatible with the existing and planned uses in the area. He does prepare, he is asking to rezone it to an ROR so that he can put up a three unit residential development that would serve as a transitional buffer between the commercial property, which is the hotel to the north, and strictly residential surrounding. As I indicated, it is currently zoned R2 Single Family District. The ROR does permit RM15, which is multifamily. It also permits office and it also permits C2. As a result, we are asking for a condition be placed on the rezoning so that it can only allow residential properties. The allowable uses, as I've said, under the ROR are greater than those in the surrounding residential district. And we are asking provision for restrictive zoning. And we're, we've got the recommendation and only residential development will be allowed on the property. And it can be townhomes, multifamily. I know there's been questions in terms of, from people in the audience perhaps, in terms of height. The height in the city of Oldsmar is 35 feet. Except if you're in the town center, you know, there are varying degrees of height in town center. So just like any other single family residential home, any, the, anything done under this would also need to be 35 feet. Does not grant a special privilege. It is established to act as a buffer between districts of purely residential and those of other uses. As I said, the land use is already ROR. So this is a zoning, rezoning to try to get it compatible with the existing land use. It will not conflict with the deeds of the neighborhood or city. Is one of the main designations is this buffer district. And he is asking to have it rezoned still to a zoning district that would allow residential. Also, in order to remove that covenant, you would need to go back to city council at least to get that covenant removed. So it's not automatic, goes with the land. General terms of this restricted covenant would be, the use in the property will be only residential. They will be allowed to do the RM15, which is multifamily. And, but he will need to comply with the height restrictions, the ISR, minimum land area. Approval of this restrictive covenant will be recorded in Pinellas County Clerk of Circuit Court. And removal of the restriction requires the city of Oldsmar's approval. It will not deter the improvement or development of other property in the area. Will not result in any change in sanitary sewer or any of the public facilities. The district boundaries are drawn appropriately. He will be required to plat the property upon finalization of a site plan to establish the ownership of the proposed units. And it will have no impact on health, safety, or welfare. And it does further the purpose of the land development code because the protection of residential neighborhoods from incompatible land uses is a primary concern. Provide a focal point for the neighborhood, reduce the number of vehicle trips in the neighborhood. And it is sort of a mixed use type of designation. It's consistent with the future land use subjective of maintaining consistency with the countywide future land use plan. And it's also consistent with future land use map, which is ROR. Due to the site proximity of the city of Oldsmar's redevelopment area, the rezoning is also consistent with the following objective. It supports the redevelopment revitalization of the city's community redevelopment district through a holding community redevelopment plan. And also supports redevelopment and revitalization of other areas in the city. It is located outside of the CRA, but the CRA is across, is a few houses away in effect. So based on the above discussion, staff recommends the city council, authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to rezone the subject property from R2 Residential Single Family District to ROR Residential Office Retail, subject to the restrictive zoning, allowing all future development of the property to be residential. And any applicant has been notified that has no objections.
Any questions from Michelle to start?
I have two questions. One is if it's, if it's rezoned as ROR Residential Office Retail, but it's also going to be restricted to just residential, there's no other, there's not, no multifamily residential?
It's, what is the question?
So I'm, I'm, I'm reading this as a, it's getting rezoned from single family residential to.
Family. And by, what we're in effect doing is right now, he could do a single family home on the two lots.
One each lot.
So, one on each lot. And by making it an ROR, which is consistent with the land use, he can do a multifamily, which could be a townhomes, and he can do three units. So gives him another unit in effect on the lot.
So when you say on the lot.
The two combined.
The two combined would be three units?
Three units.
Okay, so we're not talking about six units?
No.
Okay. And then, is there, is there, is this, is this the only zoning that allows multifamily?
Well, we have what we call a mixed use planned development, which is almost a PUD overlay. The only place that actually has it right now is the racetrack. There's some portion of the property that has that. Technically, the whole town center is considered mixed use development. There is more primarily residential in the interior of the CRA. But on the exterior sides, those are, are mixed use. So along St. Petersburg Drive, Stage Street, and that area. And part of Bayview.
Thank you. Is, is there any reason the city would not authorize this?
Well, with staffs recommending approval, so I don't know. You know, what, you either leave it as an R2 and have inconsistent, you know, land use with it. Or you make them go through a land use change process, which is not only the city, it is also the county. The land use is there to make sure that we're all compatible countywide. It's one area where everybody's consistent.
I'll pass for that.
I'm confused about the inconsistency of land use.
So am I.
And, and it's, you're talking about a buffer. Well, R2 is still a buffer. I mean, you, you put a house next to the Bayview Motel, it's still a buffer to the house next door at the, the Spanish style.
Well, it's like a transitional. When we say buffer, we're saying transitional. So instead of, you know, our, the Bayview Motel theoretically could go to a C2 use because it's zoned ROR right now, which would permit, and everybody hates gas stations, so we'll throw up gas stations. So the hotel could go to a gas station. And then this would be an ROR, and since we're saying it's residential, but not purely single family, it's kind of transitioning into just single family residential.
I still don't see the inconsistency. I'm confused about that. R2, ROR, what, what is?
And R, R2 would have a different land use. So when we're saying an inconsistency, it is, the land use already is residential office retail under the city land use rules. So we have an inconsistent zoning category with a land use category.
Right now, it's ROR, but it's not OR?
It's ROR under the land use, which is a higher level. So the zoning could be, is usually more restrictive. The zoning's got your details in terms of setbacks, height, things like that. And then the land use kind of dictates how many dwelling units you can have on per acre. And it's a little higher level.
I know this zoning gets tricky. I mean, I've been tricked before with over there behind the library. And I'm not sure I'm comfortable with this, but I don't have any more questions.
Will we see the plat?
I'm not sure because if it's only two lots, it's administrative plat. Because then you're just joining, so that's like a staff level only, a full plat. The reason you go through that is because you're going to be using easements. You need to maybe change access points, utilities, things like that. And two lots is a simple administrative replat. And as long as an easement's not required or things like that, it wouldn't have to go through that.
So it doesn't have to go, what's its plat? It's not going to go through the city council either?
No. If it's administrative replat, it wouldn't go through city council either.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question on the, the confusion between the land use versus the, so will they be attached once this change happens?
There'll be, well, it's, I hate to use the word consistent. But we have a future land use map. And so the future land use map may have one or two zoning categories that go to one. Like the CRA is actually the best example. Because the land use for that is called the Community Redevelopment District. So those four zoning districts fall under that land use. And that's the same land use that they have in Pinellas County and in Largo or whatever. So on a countywide level, everything's consistent. And in our case, we have, most of ours is one for one, where we have an ROR land use with an ROR zoning. They call it different names. When it's residential, it becomes residential low, medium, residential urban. A lot of the city land use is residential urban. And that's when we do our comprehensive plan, which is sort of the plan for the city, mapping out what we're doing, not only in land use, but in transportation, financially. We have agreements with other cities. So it's a higher level of land use. But the county, actually the next case, you'll see where we're doing something which will involve the county, should somebody trigger it. In this case, we don't have to involve the county because the land use is already there. We're already, it's already, land use of ROR is already, would be consistent with the county.
And I appreciate that lengthy explanation because I'm trying to get my head around. So, once this is done, and what is being proposed here? Is, it's, the decision's made on that. Is it attached to the person requesting, the current owner?
The restricted covenant goes with the land.
Okay.
If, if the person sells it, that covenant, that's why it's recorded or needs to be recorded with the clerk's office. Anybody doing their due diligence would see that there's a restrictive covenant on that land and that they could only do residential.
Okay, so that would, that restriction would follow it?
Yes, follows lands. It's sort of like a variance, follows the land.
Any further questions?
I understood that there was a, and it probably doesn't mean anything because there are no historical buildings in Oldsmar. Even the bank is not on the registry of Pinellas County.
The formal registry, yes.
Yes. And so this house had at one time, some type of letter that said it was owned by these race, horse race people, and it was historical. But I talked to our local historian and he said, forget about it. There is no historical buildings. So it can be bulldozed and without any issues because we're bulldozing historical buildings all the time in Oldsmar.
Yes, none of the houses are formally designated as historical where you would have certain restrictions on what could or cannot be done.
My only concern about this is how the neighbors feel. You know, I mean, they've had that dilapidated house sitting there for two years. It went into foreclosure. It's been purchased by this developer. And now the developer wants to put in these three-story townhomes, which look nice on the initial brush.
Not necessarily three stories. He has to stay 35 feet.
Who's doing that?
I am.
What were you saying?
He has to stay within 35 feet in height.
And I understand, yeah, I understand.
Which any house next door to him would also have to be. Which you've noticed is happening throughout the city as houses are redeveloped. They reach a certain point where they have to be torn down and meet FEMA guidelines.
Well, the house next door is two stories too. And so it would kind of blend, you know. But I don't know how those neighbors feel and if they approached us and said, uh-uh, we'd have to listen to them, but I don't know if they're here tonight. But I have no other issues with this as it stands. Something needs to be done there. Still don't buy the buffer story though. I don't have anything else.
Is there any other projections on when the building would take place of?
I'd have to leave that to the applicant. You know, it's just like anybody else. They don't have to commit to a, you know, when. There's no city agreement or development. And usually those things happen in development agreements where you kind of give limitations or whatever.
Is the applicant going to speak?
He's here.
Will you please take the stand, please?
The stand?
I think this, this might call to get the stand.
So we don't have any further questions?
No further, no further questions for the staff. State your name and address, please.
Sure, Ed Rowland, 313 Park Boulevard, Oldsmar.
Okay. Can you, first of all, go ahead and start to speak in regards to what you plan on doing with the property specifically, please?
Sure. So that was a great explanation about, you know, everything that we're looking to do. The overall question, I think it was about, or an earlier question that came up, sorry, was about buffer and transition, things like that. And that was kind of driving force behind townhomes there as opposed to single family. Particularly the motel is a bit of a, I'll say eyesore, but it's something that maybe a single family might not want to be next to. It's a commercial use, it's a more dense use. We've got single family as you go down the road. Typically with, with zoning and development, you try to not have high density next to low density. You try to put middle, you know, mid-density in the middle there. And, or medium density. And that's, you know, kind of what makes sense for that lot. Not dissimilar from a, you know, thought process as to what happens kind of diagonally across on the northwest side of Bayview. So behind that mini mart there, there's four, four townhome units there, four condo units. Not that kind of design, but that's the idea, transition from commercial to medium density and then single family beyond. Looked at several different ideas for the property, whether it's two units, single family, two duplex, three units, four units, quadplex, two separate duplexes. All those have pros and cons to them. And all of them, aside from the single family, fit within the ROR district. The ROR, one thing I wanted to mention was that the, the city guidelines actually talk about it being a buffer. And the guidelines say that the, further the purpose of this district is to act as a buffer between districts of purely residential nature and those of other uses. So that's from the guidelines in particular. Sorry, is that a true question?
I'll ask the board and see if they have any other questions for you. I do appreciate you coming up to.
Yeah, I'll ask a quick question. So, so are you, is it, is it going to be three townhouses or is that subject to?
So that's a great question. I have done some layouts where four units could make sense. I'd love to get feedback from everybody if, if people have opinions on that. I don't see it possibly being more than that. I think that's cramming too much into there. Four units again is what's on that same type of lot, diagonal across northwest side of Bayview there. And fits on a lot, okay. Again, that's, I don't think anybody wants four garages on the street like that. And it won't be a design like that. I'm an architect myself and I'm sensitive to making this a project that is aesthetically pleasing. One of the challenges, I'm sure some people are concerned about, is the, the large tree that's also there. And there's a back and forth between trying to have the building match the street frontage that's typical and sort of historical nature, along there at 25 feet back, and then also have the tree. So that's playing back and forth. So long answer to the question, I would imagine three or four units unless these restrictions limit meets based on the plan that was submitted.
Okay, and then with regards to the hotel there, is there any thoughts that you have to, to make? The townhouses appealing to those who might have that concern?
As far as the concern being the adjacency? Yeah, I think that, I know that there are some other plans that other folks have, may have for the, for that motel as well. And don't know exactly what that's going to turn out to be. But with regard to the townhomes themselves, they sort of lend, if being multifamily, lend themselves to be a little bit more separated from what's adjacent to them. There probably won't be a lot of windows on that side between the two. There'll be a setback, it's a minimum of seven feet or 10 feet, depending on how many units it is. So as far as the, keeping the overall project aesthetically pleasing, the idea is a craftsman style design.
The, I'm looking at the conceptual plan here. And I see that it's, it's basically a three, two-story townhouse, townhouse. With a driveway, parking lot, and three, three-car detached garage. And that's, that's, I understand this is a conceptual plan. Rest of the, the rest of the property there is, is open green space, I presume. In the back of your mind, are you, do you have any thoughts about what you might do in addition to this as far as the green space is concerned?
So that's a great question. Haven't got really that far yet. I don't think that there's going to be necessarily shared amenities for the units. I think it would strictly just be separated townhomes. So as far as, it wouldn't necessarily be a separate area for a pool or something like that.
Obviously saying, you know, the, the, where you got, you're going to have open space, you know, there would be, and with the townhomes, I would assume you're, there's a good chance you'll have children there. So some, some form, some sort of a playground or play area would be, I think would be appropriate. And I want to make sure I do understand this, but this is on the water side of the, of the high, road?
So it's south of St. Petersburg Drive?
All right, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you.
So you're going to murder a live oak on this land?
Undecided. The layout that's there would have the oak removed.
Yeah, that's the only way I could see it because it, it looks like in this photograph that it's a live oak, or I mean, it might be a live oak. I don't know. I love live oaks, the water oaks, they can go.
I understand.
You know, if you, through mitigation, I'm sure Michelle will keep you on task. You know, you will put some trees back in there. Conceptually, I see a small, tiny, and I can't read it, how far that corner, that front of that building is from that lot line? What's your setback on the south side?
South side, I believe that's seven feet is what.
Seven? I don't think that's enough. Why is that angled like that? To, to be parallel to the road and the lot's crooked?
The lot's crooked, yes.
Okay. I see that then. Well, I suppose it's a decent enough concept for the property considering it's been laying fallow so long. And I hate to see our trees cut down. I just do, so many people are doing them. I'm not even sure they have permits, but that's just an editorial comment.
And I'm sorry, just to read off the plan here, and my copy isn't much larger, but there's a dashed line that shows seven feet. And then my goal is to keep the structure a little bit further than that, so I think it's nine.
Well, the max you get to do there is three anyway. I think that would be comfortable for the neighborhood, comfortable for the neighbors, and comfortable for the, the now-called Bayview Motel. And, and the beautiful piece of property that's across the street that has just been kind of redeveloped. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah. Nicole?
Or comments?
No, good. Thank you.
Just, just a general one, and that's, there's a lot of action going on with properties all around that area right now. So I guess my only, I wanted just to, to make certain that this, this restriction on the residential is, is a definite for that particular property.
And that's my understanding. I don't have any issues with, with that restrictive covenant. I think it makes sense. I, I don't think that putting something commercial there would make any sense.
No further questions?
The only reason I bring it up is it would make sense should the other properties that are in play all get on board with the idea. That's all. There are quite a few properties that could conjoin and, and do something there that would be much larger, including the Bayview Motel.
No further questions?
Another question is, I'm, I'm looking at the, the parking lots. You have three detached single car garages? Is that the idea?
That's correct.
Plus another six parking spots? Is that the idea?
Yeah, and during the review with, with planning. Yeah, and during the review with planning, some other options and ideas were suggested to, since we've got to be at 13 feet anyway, we could potentially maybe parking under from the front, that's another option as well, but currently the plan is for the three single detached garages in the rear.
Is it normal to have three parking spots per unit, proposed unit?
So it's two per unit, and the way the code read is it does not take into account the garage as a space, so it needs to have six spaces, two per unit, and the garages are strictly because they make sense.
Correct, okay.
No further questions?
Yeah, I'm just surprised that a garage wouldn't be considered.
Me too.
The shed, effectively.
Thank you. Can I ask for a motion?
That was public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Apologize.
Let them speak.
The citizens' forum in regards to if anyone would like to speak in favor of this particular item, or if anyone would like to speak opposed to this item. Please come forward.
I have to swear them in. Before you begin, if you've arrived late and you weren't sworn in and you intend to address the board, if you could just rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you were about to give as a truce to help you before God? Thank you.
State your name and your address, please.
Tracy Coward, and I live at 134 Arlington Avenue West. So basically, my backyard bumps up to that backyard, so I can see, you know, and obviously it is definitely an eyesore. I think one of my concerns is, considering the office space designation, just because, I guess I'm unclear, you know, why we're designating an office space if it's, we're going to declare it only residential, and one of the biggest reasons is because, you know, we already have Bayview Motel back there, which, you know, terrible things go on there all the time, I don't want any additional, you know, things going on. We have an empty lot, just like down, right on Park, Park and St. Pete Drive, you know, does this open it up to put something else that will add more commercial and more, you know, business going on? There's just a lot going on back there already, we're worried about more, somebody being able to take over and then having something else that isn't being monitored, that we still have to worry about, because literally we can see this into our backyard. And I guess now, I'm a little bit concerned about the garages, were you guys saying that they were in that back area, so behind the homes?
The current design, yes, they're in the back.
Okay.
Parking, like the single-family home, park over there.
So basically, that back area that's all overgrown, there's like that little farm back there, so that would be, that would be garages right there, and that would be, like, I mean, up to six cars?
So there would need to be six parking spaces per unit.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
So either come up here to the microphone, please, or answer her question. Is that okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Yes, so the garages and the parking currently has three detached garages in the rear, which butt up to the back, near the back of the lot, and the three townhome units, excuse me, would require six parking spaces.
She's seeing the drawing?
No.
All right. It should be in a packet available to the citizens to look at.
Okay, so yeah, it does look like that parking lot is definitely right behind our property.
Are you in lot six or seven, ma'am?
I think we're in lot six right there.
Well, you're going to show, you're going to look over the parking lot, you're going to look over the parking lot, so.
I mean, I, just, so my concerns...
Well, these are going to be townhomes, correct? And they're going to be owned by individuals that have pride in their property, correct?
They won't be rented out?
Well, you wouldn't can't answer that.
Any place can be rented out.
Investor, and you could rent it, but mostly, one would assume you would buy a place like this, and you're going to take pride in your property and not be like the Bayview Motel.
Some people buy it, and then they will decide whether they're going to live in it or rent it out.
You can't control that.
So is there any way for me to have clarification about that office? Because... I guess I didn't completely understand everything that she talked about, so it's saying rezoning from R2 Residential Single Family District to ROR Residential Office Retail, and it's, you know, I'm concerned about the office retail part.
There's a stipulation that says it cannot be anything but residential.
And that can't ever be changed.
It'll be recorded with the clerk for.
But you have to account.
It had to be rezoned accordingly.
Okay, it's okay.
Yeah.
Which is probably going to be pretty hard to do.
And the whole reason designating it the residential office retail is because you would not be able to do the townhomes on that space, it'd have to stay single-family?
That's what we've been trying to wrap our heads around, too, land use, the land use question that we have.
I don't know, somebody else. Let me get some other folks up here, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting involved.
Hi, my name is Nick St. Hilaire, I live at 509 South Bayview. I am the Spanish house you referenced. I am the Spanish house that you referenced.
Ah, you're the neighbor.
I'm the guy. I really, actually really appreciate the amendment, the RM15, to make it only residential. I think that was really thoughtful and responsive, and it makes me kind of proud to live here. I am curious if RM15 could ever be utilized as a parking lot should a business change at the Bayview Motel. I prefer to not see the developer's untimely demise and his company or heirs sell it and decide they don't want to develop it, we're going to just get rid of it. Is there a possibility that it could be a residential zoned place could become a parking lot? I may be directing it to you, you might know better.
You mean the property we're discussing?
Correct. So we'll have to address that.
Yeah, the city staff.
The restrictive zoning says it would have to be residential, so in order for that to be a parking lot, the hotel would have to become residential.
Right.
So it can't be, you're mixing uses.
Gotcha. And actually, I'm pretty comfortable with two-story townhomes, I love 1920s Florida bungalows, but I don't know that's realistic to replace it. The south side setback is seven feet, possibly nine, you know, the larger the setback, the better, in my opinion, of course, because I lived there, however, it probably is seven feet currently. So those are the issues that I wanted to bring up, if it can't become a parking lot, I think my questions are answered, so I will defer to...
May I recommend you lobby city staff for a larger setback?
All right.
You know, say, hey, please, make it, and the developers, give me an extra foot.
Gotcha.
And no windows overlooking my pool.
Fortunately, our pool's on the other side, but my neighbors' backyards do abut that property, which would be an issue, I don't know if a fence is in the plans.
But you know, you were the one that I was, or your home, I was the most uncomfortable about this happening next door. You know, and how that individual, that homeowner, would feel about this, and I'm glad you came here and spoke.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity.
You know, I did my little Google search on the street, and I'm like, okay, this guy's going to be impacted more than anyone.
Sure. Well, I think that's it.
Hi, I'm Andrew Keller, I'm at 136 Arlington West, so I'm the other neighbor that my entire backyard borders this property. My wife and I just had our first infant a week ago now, so this is a very timely thing for us. We have a couple of concerns about predominantly the three or maybe four townhomes being there. Like Nick said, I really appreciate at least the designation that it can only be residential, that is very thoughtful of you guys. I also called in to Tatiana, and she had mentioned that this designation would also require some form of a landscaping zone. Is my understanding there correct, that there would have to be some landscaping between the properties, is that?
Buffering.
A buffering? Okay, because our backyard does, again, it completely shares, anytime we would be spending time in our backyard, we are in full view of whatever would be there, so something like a privacy fence or a nice buffering zone would be certainly preferable. Additionally, a lot of us in that strip work from home, so I know Wendy works from home, my wife and I both work from home, I think Tracy and Brian, you both work a lot from home, so with three or four full-family homes in that one lot, I have some concern about possible noise. That's certainly from a single-family home would not be an issue, so just because a lot of us, we take calls during the day, our offices are on the backs of our houses that we don't get the road noise, and now we're introducing another source of noise back there.
You're going to go through a year of construction, good luck.
Oh, I know, yeah, so again, this is, these are the concerns. Right. Otherwise, you know, I think those are real complaints, I had others about if this were a commercial possible home with just the street designs being the divided road, the commercial vehicles trying to get access to the property, but obviously, you know, the residential rider takes care of that, so I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
So we do appreciate the residential rider, that was really...
Sorry, can you state your name first?
Oh, yeah, sure, my name is Wendy St. Hilaire, I'm the other neighbor at 509 South Bayview. We really do appreciate the residential rider, it was a big concern for all the neighbors in the neighborhood in general, so we do appreciate that. We don't believe that our area is well-suited for mixed use, we also don't think that, I strongly don't believe that the ROR classification fits with our neighborhood and where we are. It is not mixed use, it is a residential neighborhood, and we have, all of our children have grown up there, it does not meet the characteristics of an ROR, but we do appreciate the residential, I think most of us are willing to compromise on that. I don't feel like having four townhouses would be suitable for that neighborhood and that space, I really don't, that's my opinion, I'll respect whatever the board decides. I think that having mixed use, I don't know that we'll have enough parking, whenever you look at the size of that lot, I haven't looked at the designs or seen them, there may be room for four, and they may look great, but there is a concern, as well as the neighborhood and the neighbors, right, and their yards, and it literally backing up to them. Concerned about parking, it does seem like there would be enough parking spaces at the unit, if not, parking on the street isn't something that's super viable in that area, so three units, three parking per one unit, seems like it would possibly be enough, and I think that's the major stuff that I had.
Just to let you know, we're a recommendation board, we don't make any decisions, all we do is recommend to the city council, they do the deciding, so I would suggest to everybody who has interest in this, go to the city council meeting when it goes to them, and state your things to them. That would be...
Several readings, you have many opportunities to speak.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think this is...
That way you can voice your concern directly to the council.
Yeah.
And what we recommend is driven by what you've given us as well as what staff's given, so.
And we, I personally think that, you know, townhouses, it could be doable in that area, it's just for the neighbors that back up to that property, I don't know that it's extremely fair to them to throw a whole bunch of properties right in their backyard. Thank you.
State your name and property address, please.
Joe Coran, I'm at 512, I'm across the street. My concern, and you just made me have the concern again, was you were saying that this was more of a recommendation, are we sure that this compromise that everyone is so excited about is the way it's going to be?
That's how we recommend it, and that's how the city council will see it.
Okay.
And when they pass it, when it goes through them, that's the way it will be, and it'll be recorded with the city clerk.
Okay. I do have a question about 406 South Bayview, that's the four townhouses people have been talking about? What zone is that, that it has four?
Behind Sunshine, yeah, convenience.
You know, there are townhomes on the north side of St. Peters Drive on Bayview.
It's in the town center, it's Towns, it's a, I don't remember, TCB Town Center Boulevard. So technically, under that zoning district, they could be 45 feet high.
But is that just because it's on the north side of?
It's just, this is sort of a zoning map, and so it has a separate zone, and yes, it's in a separate area, it's in the community redevelopment district.
All right, I was just wondering why.
Michelle, while you're up there, I have a question, is there a way we can recommend in our motion to limit this to three?
You can recommend it, but I would think you might object to it. I mean, I'm looking at it, if he goes more than three, his side setbacks go to 10, so I don't, that's an engineering, architectural feat I would think to do, but he might think he can do it.
I got you.
Because, you know, he's got seven is for under three, is for the three, but if he goes to four, he'd have to increase his side yard setbacks.
Got it.
Parking.
And parking, yes, yes.
It's just a recommendation. True, true.
That was all I had, I just wanted to know.
Thank you, thank you very much.
State your name and address, please.
Hi, Ginger Tadzieski, 303 Park Boulevard, but if it's okay with you, I'm actually here representing Johnny Prock, who lives at 500 South Bayview Boulevard. He was called to work at 4:30, and he asked if someone could come and speak for him. So as you know, that's the big blue house on the corner, the one that was supposed to be RE Old's house at one time, and he just bought that recently, but he was concerned that there would be townhouses across from him, and he's super not happy about that because he just bought there, and it's kind of a shock to him to say, yeah, there's going to be three or four townhouses, there's going to be six, seven, eight, nine cars, so I am here to represent him, to tell you that he is not happy about that. Also, from my job, I'm a Realtor, I get an opportunity to speak with a lot of Oldsmar residents, and I give these guys a lot of credit, because most residents, when the townhouses on Park went up, the residents had no idea they were going up until they went up, and poor Mrs. Teets next door was at the city council meeting complaining about them asking for a fence, which was not provided. I think four townhouses is too much, I think the whole yard is going to be a parking lot. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the townhouses on St. Pete and Park? There has been talk from residents that they should all get together and buy them and knock them down, because they dislike them immensely, so I'm not sure this is the right fit for old Oldsmar, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can we bring the builder back up, or the?
Can we have the architect, please, come back up, please, for just a moment? Sorry, just be a moment.
What are your feelings? Between three and four townhouses?
Well, I like three actually better. When I went through the iterations, as I mentioned earlier, about whether two units, three units, four units, four units, as Michelle mentioned, the restrictions make it extremely dense, going to additional setbacks on the sides, the additional parking, then at four units, you're also required to have RV parking, things like that. Then at four units, you're also required to have RV parking, things like that, and a handicap space, accessible space as well. So those things would be, in my mind, too much to make it functional, make it work and make it pleasing. So I understand the concerns about that. And perhaps I should have just spoke today about the three units that are on the drawing, which is what I, what I have in mind and what I'd like to do. So I was sort of keeping things open in case an idea comes up that's better and something I didn't think about, that still makes sense and still works well. But at this point, the best plan is clearly the three units, for sure.
Okay. Just wanted to air that.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Have you, have you gotten far enough along to tell me what your estimated square footage is in each townhome?
So they're roughed out at approximately 2,000 square feet.
2,000.
That could be more or less from there.
And do you know what there would be, then if you made it to fourth, if you made four? Do you, have you gone that far in calculation?
Yeah, the square footage would probably need to come down.
It's be the same. So basically you're not going to...
Be less than that.
You're just going to, you're going to increase the size of the building.
The overall footprint, yes.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Yes. If it were, if it were four.
That's all I, that's all I know.
So the question came up in regards to the landscaping buffer. Can you speak to that?
Sure. First, I'm, obviously, I think I would like to be as sensitive as I can to the neighbors and appreciate their input. New fence, landscaping, I think that that's appropriate. We just recently started taking out a lot of the overgrown stuff that was back there and it's crazy how much stuff that there was. So kind of hard to even see what kind of fencing there is or was. But I'm not sure off the top of my head what the, what the guidelines are and requirements are for landscaping. But I wouldn't be opposed to making sure that we, you know, provide whatever is comfortable and whatever, whatever works.
Meaning landscaping and fencing, both?
I think so.
Any other questions?
For good neighbors, you should put up a fence.
And there is a fence around the entire perimeter of the property right now. It's probably pretty dilapidated and needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
And can I ask the question? Because someone brought up the park property that people complain about in town. Is this going to be similar in size? Because I'm sure people want to know if it's going to look like that.
That's a great question. That was one of the things I thought about when the drawing, it calls it out as being two stories. And one of the reasons why I didn't want to go to parking underneath would be to then become three stories. Now, as Michelle mentioned, things are changing as far as our flood zones and things are getting elevated higher anyway. But by going to the detached garages in the rear and keeping it to two-story structure, it allows us to keep the overall height of the building down. So that's the benefit of having those detached garages in the rear.
Perfect. Thanks.
Little rectangle next to the parking lot.
It's actually not a rectangle. It's a backup for the parking and there's a dimension string across there.
No further questions?
Not of the architect.
Neighbor wanted to speak.
We have more customers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm the neighbor across the street, Dory Zaborski at 504 Bayview Boulevard.
Thank you.
And I am basically opposed to changing it from R2 to ROR. I am concerned about the neighborhood and the buffer and if they put three townhouses on there, I think it's just too abrupt for the neighborhood. And also the traffic and the congestion and anybody that is living in that unit next to the Bayview motel. So it's, it's just a bad situation. The neighbors in, in the immediate area are always concerned about the motel. And I know there's rumors of other people buying that property and developing it into even something more. I have had people come up to me and say that the neighbor lot next door that just sold is going to be a parking lot for the Bayview motel for their excess parking. So yeah, there's a lot of rumors going around and I don't necessarily want to see the, the structure of the neighborhood change that much. That's just my concern. I'd rather see it R2 with two houses, two townhouses, whatever you want to put on there, you know. But I think three or four is, is too much for the neighborhood.
You definitely need to keep an eye on it when it goes to the city council.
Yes.
And make your voice heard there also. Any other citizens to speak? Close the public hearing portion?
Entertain a motion.
Can I have a second for that motion?
No, you got to entertain.
Oh, okay, entertain a motion, sorry.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Discussion by the board. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discussion?
I was just going to comment on my experience when, when we, when we bought our house and we're, we're in Oldsmar but we're closer to the rec center, those townhouses came in and one of the townhouse developments happened to overlook our backyard. And so we were buying, there was still nothing but greenery there. And the first thing that popped into my mind is before I buy, I'd like to understand what's going in there. And so I can understand and respect all the concerns that I'm hearing. And I'll tell you that it ended up working out great because they did such a good job with the landscaping that the attractiveness that we have now is so much better than what was before. And I would just say, you know, whatever you can do to negotiate for the fence or plants that, you know, plants or trees or whatever that give everyone the privacy they need, push for that because it, from my, in my experience, that, that made all the difference.
You look at these two, these two lots and what's on, what's on those lots right now, I would be happy to get rid of what's on there right now. Very happy to get rid of it. Having said that, I can understand your concerns about a two-story condominium or townhome because my, same thing, exact same thing happened to my wife and myself. We bought a house, we lived in that house for a few years. The house that was behind us, they decided to put a second story on. So now we don't have any privacy in our swimming pool and our patio. My wife wanted to put in bamboo. Fortunately, I talked her out of that. But we did put in azaleas and other bushes and we have privacy. We have our privacy back because the second story is completely blocked. So it is possible to, to block it off. But that's the best argument I've heard so far. The last thing I'd like to say is, folks, I've been on this board for 30 years. And you folks have done the best job of making a presentation and coming in here in an orderly manner and doing a very good job of expressing your complaints. After 30 years, this is the best, best group I've heard. Believe you me, there have been times when people have started to come across that dais to come after us because they just don't like what we say, what we have to say. But anyway, so that, I do want to, want to commend you folks. You, you've done an excellent job.
Yep.
All right. As to what Bob said about what's sitting there now, what, what we could put, what could the, the gentleman and the architect can put there, probably is going to please the neighbors if you stay involved in this. If you're across the street and have to look over there and you see a beautiful building and beautiful development that's nicely designed, you're not going to be uncomfortable. Six cars with traffic, they're all one-way up Bayview because it's a median street. If you're across the street, you have that median buffer. Landscaping, fencing, fencing make good neighbors. So I'm, as long as the covenant stays as residential only, if he can find a way to make a profit with three buildings or three homes, they're going to be expensive homes, evidently. 2,000 square foot in Oldsmar anymore is a high dollar. And those people are going to take care of their homes and they're probably going to be good neighbors. But you probably will never see them because they're going to be in townhomes. They're going to be parking out back and I don't know, there's, if they have kids, they're going to be going down to the park. So I'm, I'm okay with the, the concept as I see now. And with the covenant restriction, I'm, I'm willing to recommend this going forward to council as it stands for the staff's report.
Okay. Cool.
I think it's a welcome change for what's sitting there right now. He answered my question about it not being a huge tower. So I'm happy with that. And with the fencing and the greenery, I think it will be fantastic. So.
I agree with, I, I like what Bob said on a couple of things. One, that, that was a great presentation. You guys did awesome. I've been on the board for 20 years and I think it's awesome that you, what you've done. I haven't seen this many people in a meeting for years. But also, that lot right now is pretty much an eyesore. And I would assume or guess that you want something to take that crap down and clean it out. And I think that the architect is in agreement to try and help you guys and be as thoughtful of you, of you and respectful of you as possible. We have to recommend in the affirmative. When we make a recommendation, when we talk about it, when we make our movement, it has to be in the affirmative to the city council. It's the vote that makes it different. Either like if seven people vote against it, it's, it's still going to go to the city council. But they know that we voted against it or for it or whatever we voted for, however we voted. But the, the motion has to be in the affirmative. So don't start throwing things at us if we start saying like we want this to go forward and you don't want to hear that. But that's how we have to say it.
Okay. Any other comments?
I always wondered what I would do if I were in this position because like you, I've been in a situation where a building happened around me that I had no control over and the next thing you know, I, all my privacy was gone and I felt vulnerable and exposed.
That's why you joined this board.
That's why I got on this board. So now here I sit. And the reality of it is, it is an eyesore. And the other reality is not very many people will want to come in and build a single-family nice home next to a motel. So this is a good compromise, I feel. And I think that it's going to, you know, with that designation as residential only, I, I do think that it's probably the best option for that area.
Okay. I will make a final comment in regards to what our board members, a lot of them reiterated this comment. And I will reiterate this again as the chair of this planning board. Of the fact of when it goes to city council, you came out tonight. That's, I commend all of you for taking your time, especially in the times where it is right now. And you still came out to let your voice heard, let your concerns be heard, to tell your side of the story. How it affects, this particular situation affects you directly, okay? How we were saying as a board members to you is take the passion of what you're saying tonight and be present when it's presented at city council. That way you can also be in front of city council to speak your concerns to them also, to be heard. That's why the citizens are able to speak their concerns and address on a particular topic. So that's all I ask in regards to you guys. In turn, be present when city council actually has this addressed, okay? That's what I ask to do.
First and third Tuesdays, right? They meet first and third Tuesday.
Yep.
And one, one other thing, you know, I think most all of us have been in your shoes. We've, we've been, we've been on that side instead of being on this side. And I don't know about these guys, but every time I've sat out there, I've lost. Every time.
I won one. So I got one.
But I'm still here. I'm still here. I'm still in my same house and I'm still a happy camper and I'm still a happy Oldsmar resident. So, so if, if you lose, accept it and go with the flow, so to speak. That's the best advice I can give you. Okay?
I think I heard somebody say, how would they know when it was up for a vote? I know outside of city hall, they, they, they put the agenda for the upcoming meeting so you can always know what they're going to do.
They're online too.
Online too, yeah.
Everything's online.
Yeah, go to the agendas on the website, you know, and check it.
I have the schedule.
Kathy's on it.
Thanks to Ian. June 16th, well, they will be authorizing the city attorney to prepare the ordinance to hear this issue. July 21st is the first reading of the ordinance and there's a public hearing at that time. August 10th is the second reading of the ordinance and that, if it passes, then it's adopted that night. And there's also a public hearing that night as well. So June 16th, July 21st, August 10th, 7:00 PM, this room.
These constructions in January. Yep.
No further comments?
Yeah, my, my only other comment was is that, you know, I, I asked about the, I asked about the zoning because I was curious why it had to say what it says about being potentially more than just, you know, residential. So that's why I asked if there was another option other than that. But if the only other option is mixed use, then it's, it's, it is what it is. And then you've got the caveat that says can only be, and that's attached to the land. And so as long as it's attached to the land, it's always going to be there, is what I understand. Is that right?
He knows I don't like the word always. Because yes, the restrictive covenant does indicate that it would need to go back to city council in order to get lifted. So that would then be another public hearing. But, so you can't always say always. That was just...
So hypothetically, if, if I was, if I was a lawyer, which I'm not, and I wanted to practice law in my townhouse, I would have to go to city council for that or...
Well, no, if, I mean, you can do a home occupation, but you can't have people, you wouldn't be able to have clients coming in and out. Anybody can do a home occupation in their house. You can make things, sell them online or whatever, but you can't have a sign outside saying I'm selling something. You can't have, okay, you're going to have the deliveries in terms of UPS, but it can't be excessive. I mean, there are lots of people in the city that are doing home occupations right now.
Yeah, I have my consultant, my consulting business I run from my home have been, have been there since 1985. So it's, but I don't have, I don't have a sign. I don't have anybody come into the office. I do all of my work in there, in the office.
Yeah, I, I asked for the, the sake of the concerns I was hearing. So that's great. Thank you.
Okay. No further comments? Can I have a motion?
I'd like to recommend to city council the approval of, excuse me, L U Z 20-03-507 South Bayview Boulevard rezoning, subject to the restrictive covenant, allowing all future development on the property to be residential only.
Excellent. I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next agenda item, the Citizens Town Center Code Amendment.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Before we start, I wanted to introduce you to our new principal planner, which is Tatiana Cheldress. And she's from the city of Oldsmar also.
Welcome.
Welcome.
You're the principal?
Player.
Is she going to be like coming up here and doing what you do some...
Eventually.
Whoa.
Oh.
So we don't get to look at your smiling face?
Well, you never know.
You're not going to retire or something, are you?
No, not yet.
Okay.
But we needed, you know, this, this was actually Stephen's replacement.
Is she new hire?
Uh, six months.
Excuse me, are you a new hire? I apologize. She's not my interpreter.
Yes.
So I've been with the city now for over seven months. So I've passed my probation period. I've been a resident with the city of Oldsmar for the last 17 years. So I have my older daughter, she went to Oldsmar Elementary and my husband is native to Oldsmar. I haven't been involved with the city that much because I used to work in Tampa. I haven't been involved with the city that much, because I used to work in Tampa. But now I'm trying to get more with the community at that point. So I hope they're to find the good use here in the neighborhood, so, and I'm so grateful.
Great. My girls were Oldsmar owls as well.
Is that a Starbucks you have there?
Yeah, I usually take a nap, and now I'm...
Just for future reference, it's a rule that you ask us if we want one before you bring one into the room.
I want some real coffee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome.
So this is a City of Oldsmar Town Center Code Amendment to increase the density for hotel use in the Town Center Commercial Residential T C C R zoning district. That's primarily the zoning district that city halls encompasses, all the land along there, some down Bayview. As you may probably know, the city is in negotiations with a hotel developer on the city-owned land located in the town center of the T C C R zoning district, which is the city, the land adjacent to city hall. And we, during the negotiations, we recognized that there are some situations where an increase in the density may be appropriate in that district, which adjoins Tampa Road, a state highway. And in order to protect the integrity of this district, the code amendment that's being proposed will require development agreement and compliance with countywide rules. The gist of it is, we put those wording in because under the countywide rules, they could go up to 150 units per acre. And so if you didn't specify that there had to be negotiations as to what would be done, and just said, okay, we're just gonna let the, right now, the, the density is 80 units per acre. You know, do we pick 120 if we wanna increase it for the, you know, the purpose of what the city's trying to do next door? Do we make it 125? So that way, it's negotiable, but it's negotiable under a structured environment. So it requires a development agreement, and because it is a, an effective change, it also will require the county, Board of the County Commissioners to also approve it. So the language is, instead of saying, you know, not to exceed 150 units and just call it a day, because then we would be still in compliance, we made it more flexible. So in effect, it's any, you could ask for anywhere between 80 up to 150, but that would need to be in a development agreement, and it would need to go to the Pinellas County for approval. So, so as I said, our local resident regulations take precedence over the countywide plan standards. But right now, this district allows 80 hotel units per acre, which is what is adopted and what's the maximum allowed. I understand, and it, under the countywide rules, I said it could go up to 150. I know the negotiations are still involved, I think it's up to like 125 potentially, is what they're looking at next door. And that would be part of the development agreement. Development agreements come for you guys. That is something that does come to the planning board for recommendations. It is also in the coastal high hazard area, so they would also need to abide or respond to the county, which is what all that other documentation you see in your packet, for what they're gonna do, because it's in the coastal high hazard area. So, pretty much, everybody south of Tampa Road is in coastal high hazard area. So the county has their own rules for that, and they would need to abide by that also. So as a result, we're recommending that city council authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Oldsmar's Town Center Development Code, the T C C R zoning district, which in the map is the dark gray area, and that's what we're asking for.
Any questions for Michelle?
I have...
Bob?
Where is it actually gonna go? I can't figure out where it is.
That triangle.
Now, it's, it's planned for, like Commerce. Oh, the dark gray is what we're trying to amend.
But I mean, that's a lot of dark gray, I mean, where...
That, well, this amendment in effect would...
The amendment will affect a lot of there.
Yes.
I wanna know, where's the hotel gonna go?
The hotel's across the street, and it's at Commerce and...
Right there where they think of a little shopping center.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just couldn't, I couldn't figure it out here.
Far West trying.
Well, I didn't, I didn't put it there, because it's, I mean, it's, it's one of the reasons we're doing it, but it's not, you know, technically part of the amendment.
Okay, all right, I got you.
So, so this, oh, we're going in order, I'm sorry.
My question is, right now, we're 80 units an acre, we're held to that, right?
Yes.
Now, if we do this, then we could probably get 100, up to 150. If we chat 'em up down at the, the county commission, right?
And the city council, and you.
Which they'll roll over, no.
They'll chat you up.
They want a, a rooftop bar, and they're gonna, density, 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 density. What have we learned from density through this pandemic? It's a bad thing. And this is my soapbox. I am against density. I have listened to our mayor talk about, the only way downtown can survive, commercially and economically, is density. And that's what we learned from the kids from the University of South Florida that came over here and built all those beautiful displays in the library years ago. What we learned from that, in order to survive, we need density. So, I'm like watching what happened this spring, and density's probably not a healthy thing anymore. So maybe we should rethink density. And I wanted to speak in a forum here, where I would be recorded, and said, "Deals against density." Now, if we limit this to 80, well, that's better than 150. So, I'm kinda like, not in compliance with this idea. Granted, we have us, the county, the city council, and the county commission. But when a developer walks in here with his big dollar signs, and I'm gonna make you this thing, and it's gonna be, you're gonna get our tax dollars, and it's gonna be a good thing for the city, well, everybody's gonna go, yeah, let's do it. So, I, I don't think that they're gonna really think real hard about saying no to 150 units an acre. So, that being said, I, I am not comfortable with this as presented.
Well, when I said 150, I said that is the maximum under the countywide rules. It does not necessarily mean that's what city council would approve.
I understand that.
That would be the first approval step.
And, and I'm, I hate to be cynical about, more means more. But, I'm done. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna save my speech for later, but the two white-haired guys agree. I'm with you. I'm also a student of psychology, and I've seen the experiment where you put rats in a box. You put one rat in, he's fine, you put two rats in, they do a lung, you put three rats in, they, yeah, you put four rats in, five rats in, now they're killing each other.
Or then, or they make a committee.
That's, that's density, and that's, that's the way it is, period.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, that's...
Now, how would this negatively affect our opportunity and chances for a developer to come in there and go, "I'm gonna build this wonderful thing for Oldsmar," which is kinda what the council's driven toward? I mean, you, we've heard about it, we've watched them go through their, their checks and balances, and their evaluations, and their checklists, and their discussions, and their back-and-forth conversations with developers. Would this, if we said, "We don't recommend this," or, wait, we had five votes against, or whatever, you know? However it plays, we are a recommend board. Would, is there a negative side to the fact that we would limit to 80 from a developer's standpoint or viewpoint? Could you opinionate about that?
Well, I'm not sure if they could go for a variance. And usually, or within the development agreement, they could just say, "We'd like to have this increased density. The development agreement now comes through you, and then you're gonna have to just deny the development agreement." And then, that'll go to the city council, and then, because it's an increase in density, it still would go to, to, to Pinellas County.
Well, I don't wanna hurt our chances for that thing down there.
It's rooms, I mean, units per acre, it's, it's rooms, how many hotel rooms? So, as I said, I believe right now, it's 125 is what they're trying to get to.
Well, actually, if everybody was sick, nobody's staying there anyway, eh? All right, thank you.
Cole?
Everything's already tore down over there. I mean, you took away my fa- famous pizza. I'm still devastated about it. No, but I'm just saying, it still hurts. I have my picture with them. No, but, I mean, I feel like it's already somewhat of a done deal. So, I'm just kind of, like you said, going with it, so.
Yeah, we have very little influence on the city council on anyway, it's even less with county commissioners. I'm not a guy, I mean, a hotel's a hotel, you're gonna put more than 80 rooms in a hotel.
Well, I mean, we had two options. We could've gone with a code amendment, and then I said, "Pick a number." I don't believe it would've been 150. We would've said, "Okay, we wanna increase the density to 130, say, or 125." Instead, we said, "Well, this still gives some flexibility, but also requires the development agreement." It's not like somebody could just come and do Bayview and just put up 150 units. They'd have to come through the city, do negotiations with the development agreement.
So, the, my concerns would be parking. One, the more rooms, the more parking you need. Is there something that's gonna say you have to have like, one slot, one parking place for every?
The code already has provisions for how many parking spaces are required for each hotel unit. That is also, I mean, it's a lot of, all that information usually is within the development agreement in terms of how much parking is being provided, just like any other developer, you guys know, they can go for variances and request deviations from what's required, and tell us why. I haven't been involved in negotiations, just presenting the code amendment.
What about...
And so they're not gonna put another car wash in there?
Well, I guess under that, I'm trying to think if even under that district they could, but no.
Michelle, how are people gonna get out? I asked this last time, I don't know if there's been more talk about it. But, is there gonna be direct access to Tampa Road? Because if not, it's gonna cause like a lot of backup in the little downtown area.
Right now, the city has issued, is in the process, we issued an RFQ for, and there's been conceptual plans that city council has seen and accepted, which is not just the hotel, but other uses, a fountain, things like that. And we have an RFQ out, which is being reviewed by staff in terms of submissions, which would be for the whole property. Because the intent is to develop the whole site, not just the one hotel site, but everything's, it's integrated and worked, worked out. Through that, you would do, that's when you get, you know, access to the hotel and/or other uses, type of parking, infrastructure, things like that.
Okay, so at that point, that's when we would know what kind of traffic situation we're looking at.
Temporarily, they're gonna have to have some type of access, and I believe it's off of Commerce?
Something in Washington.
Washington and Commerce. FDOT's not really gonna let us cut into the, I mean, that's kind of a dangerous little intersection to begin with.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
I just wanna make sure I understand, so, so the, the change we're talking about is only to the dark gray area? Because I see two things that are marked, the Town Center Commercial, one's the orange.
Right. It's a zoning, yes, it's only for that zoning.
And so that, would that also let properties that have already developed increase the number of rooms?
If they technically wanted to, but they still would need a development agreement to do so, and they would still have to go through the process. That, that was really why we put the language in, because if you just said, let's say 150 units, if I just said 150 units, that's it, that's their right, we have no say.
That makes sense, thank you.
Any further questions for Michelle?
I was curious if Felicia Donnelly had anything to share with regards to the, the proposed?
Hi, good evening, Felicia Donnelly, Assistant City Manager. We are in process of negotiating with the developer for the hotel there. We're actually looking, at present time, we're looking at 101 rooms, so it's still more than the 80 units an acre. I think it's important to note that Pinellas County did designate this as an activity center. And in their, and their latest iteration of their countywide rules in the countywide map, it was really important for them to designate Tampa Road as a multimodal corridor with higher density development around Tampa Road. So, to place assurances and for the rest of the zoning, Michelle and our, you know, our city attorney recommended that each one would go through development agreement so that we could negotiate at the time, during the proposal, for how many, up to how many rooms would be appropriate for the site. So this one, we're looking at 100, and I think it's at 101. I don't see it going up from there, because they're constrained by the land with the parking requirements. So, right now, the, the city, you know, is, is, and right now, we're looking at selling them an acre of property, which is, includes where the former Swain, I call it the Swain property, Famous Pizza. There's a right-of-way there, Fairfield, it has, it's a platted street, it goes to Tampa, but it isn't really.
Right.
So, so from Fairfield over to Washington is about an acre. And then, the city is intending to lease more property so that they can fit a parking lot in until such time that the master plan is completed, which includes a parking garage. So then, the city would enter into a lease to lease the spaces, the hotel would lease the sta- spaces, you'll see through the development agreement, for the parking garage. So the intent is that the parking wouldn't stay along Tampa Road, that it would move into a parking garage at that time when a parking garage is built. Do you guys have any questions about anything else in that area, why I'm happy to be here?
The height of this 100, it would be 101 units an acre. What would the heights be on this building?
I, the height was under, I'm waiting for a revised set of plans, but I think it was like, right at the 75-feet limit. They, they didn't need a variance for the height restriction.
Six stories, right?
I think it's six stories. I'm not, I'm not, it's, I, I didn't look at the, I think it's six stories. So, but it's 75 feet, because they didn't ask for a variance for the height, and that's the restriction for the zoning.
It's the highest building in town now.
I, that I don't know, you would, you might know better than me.
It's one of those hotels, but I'm...
Hampton Inn? It's, is it five, five stories or six? Six stories?
I think it's 65 feet, I think it rings a bell, but...
They had to go for a variance.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Any other?
Thank you.
Good?
Oh, good.
One more.
Yeah, yeah.
My other, my, my, my concern, I'm, I'm, I agree with, with the... Here's Tampa Road. Here's 580. Here's a railroad crossing. And now you wanna put another street? Do a hotel in there?
No. No. I'm coming back.
Okay.
So, the, the concept plan, and the, the concept plan that was approved by council at this point, shows that we're using the existing streets to access a site, which is Commerce, it's kind of, I, it's open, it's not in the best shape, right? And then Fairfield, which also, so it's just kind of a, an L shape? Like this, if I'm looking at a map? Up Fairfield, and then Commerce, and then Tampa Road's here.
The Fairfield's the one that doesn't, it's an incomplete street, right?
Right, and it would actually, it would end where it does now. So, it wouldn't go through, it would just end into Commerce.
And then you have to go right and then left.
Yeah, so it's just...
Still putting a, a lot more cars in, in a very tight area, where, and we all know, I mean, everybody knows that the vast majority of accidents happen at intersections. So, you know, this is just, to me, it looks like it's just, you're just putting more cars in a tighter space and asking for trouble.
Right, so we, yeah, so we, I've already met preliminarily with DOT to talk about the impacts to the site. So, I mean, definitely, when you add more activity anywhere, you generate more trips, right? So, so, you know, as we move through the master, the, the master planning process, which Michelle just talked about, we just received proposals back. It's an RFQ for a full master plan. We have the traffic impact study as part of that, and stormwater studies, any kind of study you could think of is in that. And then, and then plating it, so we can parcel it off, and then it's also got, you know, the, the engineer design, actually, to construction documents of all the public space. space, which includes all the roadways and streetscape, and then the public space, which is a very large portion of the site. The, the council would like to see remain in a parkland, and maybe have a fountain feature. So when you look at the site all total from their concept plan, it, a lot of it is still green space. So, we'll, we'll do the traffic impact studies during that process.
Well, I, I can tell you that I and a lot of past members of this board have never had a whole, a whole lot of faith in traffic studies, especially when you get out there in it and you're saying, they said this road could handle 3,000 cars in an hour, and I'm sitting there, uh, uh, you know? But I mean, seriously, though, there, there has been quite a few members of, past members of the board who've questioned those traffic studies, because I, and I'm one of them, I just do not believe they're accurate.
My techs always work. Yeah. I mean, there is, Bob brings up an excellent point, though. I mean, you're talking, in the streets, you're putting a lot of additional traffic on streets that are ve- I mean, if you look at it, it's, we're not talking about four, five lanes, we're talking about very narrow type streets to handle that additional volume. So, I do agree that the, I mean, you gotta make sure that that study is gonna be accurate.
Yeah, the, the volumes of trips haven't even been determined, because the land uses still have to be decided. So, you know, they use that ITE, the, what is it, the International Traffic Engineers' Manual, that really lays out how many trips your residential house or hotel generates, and so then they look at that and they put it in their models, and that's how they project what the roadway improvements are. So we're, we'll be going through that process. But right now, we've still got a, we have a concept plan, and we have to define what those uses are.
I'd also recommend they look at the, the streets themselves in regards to how much the street could actually hold traffic.
Right, for the capacity of the volume of the streets?
For the capacity, exactly.
Absolutely, that's part of the traffic impact study.
For sure. Okay.
Yeah, I, I live on Washington, so I, I often have to pass my street because of the traffic coming in from 580, and Tampa Road converging, and I have to go on down and make a, a turn, because I can't already. So, I guess my, my question is, if, are, are we not going to have this developer stay in if we didn't increase to this 100 and whatever, I guess? Uh, will the developer not stay within the 80? Am I asking this?
No, it'll be 101.
It's at 101 right now.
It's at 101?
Well, they want 101, but aren't we voting on whether we're going to amend this from 80? Or, or am I to understand that they won't stay in the 80, and that's why we have to amend it?
Um, they're, they're exceeding the threshold for 80, right? So, the code doesn't allow a variance for the units, the density per acre. So the code only allows like eight things you can get a variance for, and, and that's not one of them. So, yeah, it's very, very possible that they would not be interested. They've, they've come up with a financial feasible plan that works for their business model with also what the city asked for. You know, we were very specific, we want a boutique hotel, we want a rooftop bar, we want a restaurant component. So they have, have devised a plan from a market study that reaches what the city council has requested. So, I would think that not having that additional 21 hotel rooms, that, that's a pretty big hit from a financial revenue perspective.
I say we cancel the rooftop bar.
No, I won't.
The reality of the situation is, we really don't have a choice. We, we, we recommend the city council approval.
I'm not sitting up there.
And voted down, still, they're gonna look at it and say, oh, we want it, so.
Any further questions?
I was, I was just curious if that was kind of a.
Okay.
Open to discussion or next, or is this part of the question and discussion?
I thought that was the discussion.
That was the discussion.
Okay, so I was, I was just gonna say that, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy it's something other than a car wash place, and a car wash generates a lot of traffic.
My buddy.
We've seen, we've seen way too many in Oldsmar, and, and, and driving down Tampa Road is, is, I mean, it's not attractive. But, you know, the, the fact that we have a lot of restaurants and we have hotels means that we have great infrastructure to support something more. And so you look at, you look at, you look at Safety Harbor, they've got the, the hotel kind of, kind of anchoring the development down that street. You look at Dunedin, they've got the hospital, kind of, that could've been influential in anchoring the development down that, that street. And, and, you know, you look at this, you know, the stuff that we have in Oldsmar, it's probably the hotels and the restaurants that drive a lot more, a lot more business in, into our area than, than some of the other alternatives, and some of the other alternatives are not necessarily adding to the appeal of Oldsmar. And as far as Oldsmar goes, another thing that we have that's pretty phenomenal is we have a lot of business infrastructure around us. So we already have, we already have a, a lot of traffic coming through, and I live, I live, um, off of Forest Lakes, and with all the businesses down, down that street, I mean, there's, there's, it gets very congested, and I know they're, they're widening the road in areas where it's narrow, but this sort of stuff is inevitable, and if, if we can get a boutique hotel on a corner where you're not gonna have any luck getting anything too beautiful, but a boutique hotel is gonna be much more attractive than some of the alternatives. And then, you know, anything to kind of protect or shield any main street type of feature from the road noise and the traffic and all this stuff on, on Tampa, I mean, these are all things that I think are working in our favor. And, um, and I, and I, and I think the alternatives are more car washes.
Blue car washes.
And, and then, and think about all the neighborhoods that get, or, or all the main streets that get a car dealerships. I mean, that, those, those take a ton of space, and they're, they're not the most appealing to look at. Once they're in, you can't get rid of them, so. So I, I, I like the idea of another hotel where there's already hotels, and it gives, and, and restaurants, so it kind of fits in with the area, but it also shields the, the main street from, uh, from having necessarily a big feature like a hotel on, on, on a street where we, we'd want more, more of a walkable, um, appealing, like lifestyle type, um, development. And, you know, keep, keep the stuff that, on, on Tampa that can be on Tampa, I think it's, it's a good idea. That's my two cents.
I agree with everything you said. We have a limit of 80. Now the guy says, I want 101. So now we're moving our limit. Now granted, we've got a check and balance of us, the city council, and this county commission to, to moderate that. But when the next guy comes in and says, well, well, no, no, I want 180.
Can't do it.
What are you gonna do?
150's the max.
What?
150's the max.
That target's gonna change.
Well, you just told me.
This one did. So, you know, and, and, you know, I like the idea of the hotel and all that, but, you know, we're, we're changing a limit that's been set in stone, and, well, not stone, it's certainly not always, can't always say always. But, you know, so. That's the underlying concept. We have a, a limit right now, now we're moving them. It's just kind of like, you were assigned 25 bomber missions in World War II, oh, wait, now it's 30. Oh, wait, I was just gonna go home, I had 25. Oh, no, it's 30. I gotta, get, keep moving, I kept moving the goal.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, I don't know if that's a good analogy, but I'm kind of getting the vibe here that, 80, now we want to move it to 101, 150, yeah? Let's keep moving it to, to accommodate a rooftop bar and the, the boutique hotel and what council has initiated.
Again, the reality of the situation is, we don't have a choice.
Exactly.
We could sit here and talk about this all night, we're not gonna make any difference.
Well, I have a choice, I, I can vote no.
Right, well, you can vote no, and still, we can all vote no, and it still will happen.
Well, yeah, you're right. Pop my bubble, will you?
You know, I was here, I was here when the, uh, when, when the town center was planned. I mean, I can't tell you how many staff hours, how much effort and energy and work went into making those plans, and so, and so for some reason, you guys thought, not you, because you weren't here, but, you, you were a consultant then, weren't you?
No.
You weren't, well, anyway, um, there were, that, uh, the planning went into it, said, okay, 80, that's it. How much planning went into that to come up with that number? Why didn't you just all of a sudden throw it away and say, oh, well, you know?
My spec.
We know why, but it, I, I don't, I don't know, you, when you plan, when you put that much effort and energy and time into planning something, and you finally come up with a, a number or whatever, you ought to try to stick with it. I mean, I know there's gonna be some exceptions, but.
I guess we're gonna stick flexible.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, I gotta, I gotta shut up. I wanna go home.
Any other comments? From the board?
I think car washes generate more traffic.
You do what?
Okay, let's go ahead and move forward to.
Get me started on that blue car wash.
Can I get a motion?
I was so shocked.
On the city town center code amendment?
Recommend to city council, the approval of CA 20 dash 01, City of Oldsmar Town Center Code Amendment, to increase the density for a hotel use in the town center commercial residential zoning district.
All second.
And? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
No.
Two oppositions, or two no to oppositions?
I'm curtained.
Yep, two in opposition.
Two no's, yeah.
Yep.
The old guy's motion crap.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Leading hand.